Good evening, I'd like to call to order, please, the Independent School District 834 School Board Business Meeting on October 12th, 2017. Barb, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Board Chair Hepner has not arrived. Vice Chair Lachlan.
Here.
Treasurer Lehman.
Here.
Park Pelletier.
Here.
Director Pearson.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stigland.
Here.
Thank you. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our district mission statement. Sarah, would you please read that?
Yes. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And our school board goals, Tom, please.
Thank you. As board members, we are morally and legally responsible for an equitable and quality education for each and every student in our district. As board members, we ensure decisions are made in the interests of all students E through 21 and for future generations impacted by our actions. Our goals are to partner with administration to ensure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential, participate in efforts that support student and community engagement, direct district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017-18, and exercise effective self-governance.
Thank you very much. All right, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor approving tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Agenda passes. All right, our superintendents report. Superintendent Pontrelli.
Thank you. Good evening. As many of you know, we've been searching for a location for a new bus garage for more than two years. As a reminder to the board, we've shared over seventeen properties that we've initially looked at, and you'll remember that we had concerns with each. Some of them, and the most common, were zoning issues. A few of them were sites that are too small for our needs or had other challenges that didn't make them desirable or feasible. The property owner of our current lease site may extend our lease into December over on Stagecoach, but we would need to have a property after that. There's been some conversation by the board about the possibility of buying that property. We've shared with you environmental reports from 1995 and 2007, as well as a report from Fields Environmental. To further investigate the feasibility of this site, the board would need to direct us to dip into the fumbouts, to hire a consultant to conduct a Phase II environmental study. Keep in mind, the current site is undersized for our needs, and we'd need to find a second location to store additional buses, which would be an increased cost. Earlier this year, we presented you with a purchase agreement for Skennell Property in Afton based on the parameters that you had set for us. Since then, we've learned of changes to zoning for the property by the city of Afton. Further action on that property is on hold while Skennell determines if they'll pursue legal action against the city of Afton. We don't know how long that process may take. As a reminder, a total of 3.5 million was set aside in the bond to be used towards the cost of a bus garage and bus terminal. Most available properties would require an investment closer to about $6 million. With the exception of the current location, which is again undersized and has some environmental safety questions, we cannot project a bus garage for 3.5 million at this time. While we continue to search for property to purchase, we must now also look at considering leasing options. Very few leasing options are available within our district boundaries, and we're having to look outside the district for possible solutions. Based on available properties for lease, we do anticipate our costs rising from about the current $228,000 per year to between $3,000 and $400,000 for a new location. This does not account for a change in contract, which would occur if we were located outside of the district, which would lengthen our driver's day, nor does it include any increases in fuel or other resulting costs. We'll be bringing this issue to you further in the future at a work session for you to discuss and give you more details. I'd also like to give you an update on marine and withrow. We'll be scheduling a session with the Finance and Facilities Working Group to look at the information that's been returned and consider options for the sale of marine and the future of withrow school. We're also going to be meeting with Brian Baer and the administration from the city of Hugo to talk about the upkeep of the facilities and the possible recreational use of withrow school property site. A concern was brought up at a recent school board work session regarding ADA compliance at the Pony Activity Center. Our facility manager, Tony Wilder, has explored the concern, and although materials in question are ADA compliant, we agree that they could be of higher quality. We're working to swap out the materials with new materials to resolve the concern, and we've shared this plan with the person who had the concerns. One more thing that we'd like to share is the high school parking lot. There have been issues within the parking lot. We've worked on the transportation lanes in, but those of you who are trying to drop off students in the morning know that there are concerns. So after MEA break, we'll be making some modifications to the high school parking lot to improve the flow and traffic control. This should help improve safety for our kids who are walking through the parking lot, and we expect to have that system in place after the students return from MEA. And then finally, last week, leaders from Stillwater met with staff from Minnetonka and Innes Prairie to begin planning for the Upper Minnesota Ignite and Innovate Conference. This conference will be held in Stillwater, June 18th through the 22nd. Two years ago, it was held in Minnetonka, last year in Innes Prairie. And educators from across the Midwest will be visiting with Stillwater to learn more about innovation and working with students.
Thank you. Thank you. On to our introductory items and our student report.
Hi, my name is Annabelle Gregg, and I am one of the student body presidents at Stillwater. And today I will be sharing with you the academic update. Fall break is on the forefront of most students' minds at Stillwater Area High School. As the time off quickly approaches, academics have not ceased. This past week, the high school administered the ACT/ASPIRE and pre-ACT/SAT exam for all grades except for the senior class. These exams will help to educate the test takers on their strengths and weaknesses to better be prepared for the real exam. Last week, the College and Career Center held an informational meeting during flex time to highlight the community scholarships that seniors can apply for. With post-secondary education option deadlines quickly approaching, there's a great deal of stress exuding from the class of 2018. The fall break will provide a much-needed and deserved break for all students and staff. AP Environmental students have been working on testing water samples, determining phosphate levels, dissolved oxygen amounts, pH, and more. Trips to Browns Creek and Lily Lake are being looked forward to as students perfect their testing and analytical abilities. Marketing classes working hard to learn the ins and outs of the stock exchange. Reading current events, studying brokerage, and experimenting have been deemed as keys to success. Students are playing the stock market game currently and have three teams in the top ten out of a total of 350 in the state. Many exciting events have been happening inside and outside the classroom. It is hard to believe quarter one will be almost complete on November 2nd. Now over to activities.
I'm Avi Okonovich, and I'm also student body president with Annabelle, and I'll be covering the sports and activities. So this was a big week for sports at Stillwater Area High School. Section games are underway. The girls varsity soccer team started their first section game at home against Roseville at 5:00 tonight, and the boys soccer team takes the field afterward at 7:00 against White Bear in their second section game. And the football team has an away game against St. Michael Albertville tomorrow night at 7:00. In other news, student council hosted the first-ever movie night at Stillwater Area High School last Saturday on the football field. We played Ferris Bueller's Day Off for approximately eighty moviegoers, and we received very positive feedback, and will be expecting to host another movie night in the springtime. Lastly, mark your calendars to watch the theater crew's hard work. They will be performing Grease on October 13th, 14th, 26th, 27th, and 28th at 7:00 p.m. and on October 15th at 2:00 p.m. Lastly, if you're interested in keeping up with the high school, be sure to follow the Stillwater Area High School Student Council page on Twitter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know your handle, the Twitter handle, by any chance?
I can get it.
Okay, excellent. We'll make sure to announce that people can follow. All right, next up is the district recognition. Superintendent Pontrelli.
Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Deb Van Kly and W. Few of mine coming forward. Deb is being honored by the Minnesota Society of Health and Physical Education Teachers. She's been chosen to receive the Paul Schmidt Award, which recognizes her outstanding services and contributions in the field of health and physical education. Ms. Van Kly has helped lead the district's innovative physical education program, which has garnered national attention for improving the overall health and wellness of students by focusing on lifetime physical fitness. She's worked for the Stillwater Public School since 1998, serving as teacher, coach, and coordinator for the Federal Physical Education Program, or what we call the PEP Grant. Through the PEP Grant, students were able to learn about good nutrition and healthy eating habits and develop their own personal fitness programs, also monitoring their physical fitness with things like pedometers and heart rate monitors. Deb's also been a liaison to Lakeview Health, where she promotes the Power Up Program. She's also served as a representative for various community organizations and meetings throughout the year for us. And it is my pleasure to introduce Deb. She's done some amazing work for our district, so thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Superintendent Pontrelli. As I was sharing with my husband and daughter when we came in, it's like, this is not something I really enjoy being in the limelight, but I am honored. But as you know, we don't do this work alone. And I want to thank my family for their constant encouragement and support, our community partners with Lakeview and Washington Public Health, like you mentioned earlier, the Learning Innovation Crew over at CSB, they're solid and awesome to work with, our wonderful physical education and health teachers that provide engaging opportunities, provide physical literacy for our students. As you noted, I've been a physical education teacher for 23 years, and I can't thank you, Superintendent Pontrelli, enough for recognizing the opportunity and supporting the work. I still remember when you allowed us to put heart rate monitors on school board members, and people got to see where their heart rate was. That was awesome. You personally took the time to come to our national presentation in Minneapolis on a Saturday. I apologize. It just means a ton, you don't even imagine. It's through your commitment, support, and guidance that Stillwater Physical Education is leading the way locally, regionally, and nationally. We appreciate your dedication to growing the whole child, and I know that our work is not done, but gaining momentum. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb, I just wanted to say that, you know, for as long as I've been a parent in the district, just your tireless efforts and your advocacy for communicating to all of us the importance of the role that physical health plays in our children's lives, and as we all know, there's so much at stake, and I believe this current generation of children, or their first generation, that are not expected to live as long as their parents, and your efforts and what you've done in this district to move those initiatives forward just can't be stressed enough, just how critical they've been, so thank you. All right, moving on, we have our open forum. All right, before I get to our speakers, I'd just like to read our preamble to the open forum, if I will, if I might, and we have six speakers tonight. If you wish to speak to the board, you will be able to do so at the start of the school board meeting during open forum. Oh, it says, okay, I don't know if I've read that, sorry. All right, we're moving on here, okay. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, our law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised, and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. The board may, however, ask administration to review the concerns presented. All right, before we start with our first speaker, I have one more statement I'd like to read on behalf of the board. At a school board meeting on October 10th, 2017, the board held a closed session for preliminary consideration of a complaint against two board members. This meeting was closed as required under the open meeting law. During the open portion of the meeting, the board voted to investigate the complaint. This is consistent with our district practice. The board also voted to retain the services of Kristy Hastings with Pemberton Law to complete the investigation. The current status of this complaint is pending investigation. All right, with that, our first speaker, Ms. Tina Riley, please.
Tina Riley, Stillwater. At the September 14th board meeting, I requested, with the support of 69 community members, the resignations of Chair Hepner and Vice Chair Lachlan, substantiated by policy violations and unethical behavior. While I appreciate your efforts to respond, neither policy violations nor ethics were addressed in either of them. What was addressed was emotion. I made it a point to leave emotion out and address facts. George, being a survivor of stage four cancer is no small feat. I congratulate you, and that is not something I offer lightly. I have put two of my own children through cancer treatments, a very rare cancer, not known to be genetic yet. We are one of only two families known to be to the research team and experts at Baylor. What I have learned through those experiences is persistence, patience, teamwork, and the endless ability to discover new information, new ideas, and new processes. I've also learned how to digest information, eliminating knee-jerk reactions and putting the feels on hold until all information is in. In your response, you again left out the 2007 report you had in your possession. You didn't have to read very far. On page two, it states the summary and recommendations, which includes the recognized environmental conditions, buried solid waste, a three-foot-in-diameter diesel spill from filling vehicles, potentially contaminated groundwater, a pail at the corner of a building, and a lead acid battery at the corner of a building. None of these things justify the imminent need to vacate property. Omitting selective pieces of information to achieve your desired result is disingenuous. Paula, I'm sure you're familiar with the word libel. You've recently published more than one article in which you claim I am a representative of a small hate group that engages in personal attacks. First, I'm not sure what I am a representative of. I hold no office, and I haven't been elected to any position, and I'm unaware of any hate site. Second, I have not engaged in personal attacks. And I am not dishonest. You also haven't had a conversation with me about what my concerns might be, so how can you claim you know those? What I do represent is my own quest for truth and transparency, and I'm sure you've read my affidavit, and that has already been made clear. Are you trying to keep the board legal counsel busy by intentionally writing articles that misrepresent my character? BGP 2.1.1.2, the board shall govern with emphasis on integrity and truthfulness in all methods and practices. I haven't launched any campaign for your removal. The 69 signatures were effortless, don't minimize those 69 taxpayers. BGP 2.2.2.1, our shared beliefs are all people have inherent value. The majority of District 834 does not agree with your idea of your duty to the voters and deceiving taxpayers with a $97.5 million bond. Your own district survey proves that and was reinforced last election. Remember, only 25,000 votes were for pro-bowl candidates, while 44,000 votes were for anti-bowl candidates. My request for your resignations has to do with the here and now and the fact that you continually violate board policy and look the other way. Paula, there is no reason you do not follow board governing policies as you are currently on the policy-working group. A common thread in your BGP is honesty, truthfulness, and respect, with each of these characteristics lacking in your performance on the board. Your responses do not justify your violations. As far as following Mary Sicconi's advice of, when you're asked a question, answer the question you want to be asked, I'm not sure skirting around questions is a good idea at a time when you have broken the trust with the community. BGP 2.2.2.9, relationships based on caring, honesty, and respect strengthen our community. BGP 2.1.1.9, the board shall govern with emphasis on policy governance. I have mentioned seven different policy violations and defamation. As a board chair and a vice chair running for state office, this is unacceptable. The silence by the rest of the board is deafening, and the dismissiveness of my request is disconcerting. I request the reasoning of your disregard of my call to action and why you find it appropriate to vote to pursue investigating others while you are in question yourselves. I am reiterating my request for the board to take action. I also want an apology in print on both Paula's personal Facebook page and in the lowdown, along with a retraction in regard to the criminal defamation statute 609.765 and statute 548.06 damages for libel. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Amy Burbach. Our next speaker is Amy Burbach. Our next speaker is Amy Burbach.
Vice Chair Lachlan, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board, thank you. My name is Amy Burbach. My address is 213 Sherburne Street North, Stillwater, Minnesota. Every day, members of this community, including parents, teachers, and our leaders, are quietly doing the hard work to bring change and reform to a stressed and broken public education system. I continue to work toward social justice and education through my professional and academic activities, and I remain committed to staying engaged and part of the continuing dialogue right here in Stillwater. We can all agree our community deserves democratic spaces and processes that honor every individual experience and contribution to that dialogue. We will be free to move forward by developing our ideas and shared vision for what is possible by working alongside each other and not competing with each other. Earlier this week, I had the opportunity to visit an elementary school where they're using an innovative grow-your-own program, they're called residency programs, where a school district can support their own employees who are not licensed teachers to gain licensure by helping remove some of the barriers to that process. It is aggressive work that takes a lot of partnership, and it's a direct response to the critical teacher shortage, the need to diversify our teacher ranks, and it's a very aggressive tool to close the opportunity gap. Together with partners, University of St. Thomas, the school board, U of M, and Senator Al Franken, we were able to witness firsthand the hard work they engage in to address these issues. Everyone who is doing this work daily agrees the challenges we face are complex, they are real, and they're not in our future, they are here now. The visit for me was a powerful and timely reminder that, as leaders committed to providing a free, a fair, and an appropriate public education, we must remain vigilant in solving the real problems that reach into every corner of our community and are impacting our children. For most of us, the system worked pretty well, and when it didn't, we had the access, skills, and resources to make it work for us. For the marginalized, those without standing in the community, without allies to support them, the system too often lets them down. In fact, our systems are designed to let those down. Leaders committed to social justice and education are challenging dominant ideologies and power structures that exist in our institutions and in our own communities. Working toward social justice is contentious work, and it carries personal and professional risk. Speaking truth to power, the ability to tell it like it is, calling out all forms of exclusion and disenfranchisement requires a unique combination of moral courage and political skill. We cannot stop fighting for the rights of kids to often left behind based on certain social, academic, family, religious, or racial norms. Fifty years ago, Dr. Martin Luther King delivered a powerful speech saying there are some things in our society, some things in our world, to which we should never be adjusted. We need to refuse to normalize inequality and continue to expose injustice whenever we see it. To remain silent and to withdraw is simply a failure to show the required care for those in the shadows and at the margins of our communities. I am not alone knowing the pain that remains and is eating away at our community. Right now, in the midst of a nation gripped by crisis and chaos, Stillwater has the opportunity to do things differently. Despite our political disagreements, we need to be talking with each other and not about each other. Meaningful public discourse has been shut down far too long. I want to share that there is hope. I hear it in my private conversations, in my professional work, I witness it in those committed to the real work of progress through service. I encourage others in this community to gather your strength, rise up, stand at this podium, and be the positive, powerful voice for those who have been left voiceless.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Sue Schultz. If you could please state your name and address for us, please, for the record.
Yes, I'm Sue Schultz, and I live at 9180 Stonebridge. And I'm here tonight with my husband, Dan, who is a wheelchair athlete. He is a monoskier and a hand wheeler, and he has also been a national softball championship, a national softball champion for 11 years. I'm here to talk to you about the bathroom doors at the new football stadium. We have two boys who graduated from the high school and made it through the U. I have a degree in therapeutic rec, and my job before this was with community thread, and I have mostly worked with seniors and disabilities, and I ran the Bayport Senior I am asking for automated doors at the new football stadium to replace the handles that are there. I already talked to Tony Wilder, the site facility manager, and he told me that he knew the handles were not ADA and that they were temporary, and he wanted to put in some other ones. And he told me that they were at Stonebridge, so I went and looked at them, and they are not, in my opinion, they will not be ADA acceptable, and they are too hard to use. Tony was very nice with me on the phone, and he said he would love to meet with me and we could work together. And right now, he's on a well-deserved vacation, so I am anxious to meet him. I also forgot to say in the beginning that my husband and I are both subparas at the school district for the past three years. Since we retired, I work with preschool through junior high, and my husband works with junior high through the high school. I do not feel adequate to work with the high school kids, but the rest of the students I really enjoy. And I want to comment and compliment the special ed people that I do work with. They work with the parents and the kids, and they work for individual improvement with the children, and I'm glad to be there. But tonight, I come to you asking for the automatic doors and the automatic handles in the restroom. I also want to question the criteria and the process that our district uses when we work with ADA. Do the architects we hire truly understand the standards of ADA? Or is it that there's a misunderstanding, or a miscommunication, or maybe budget limitations on what we install in our schools? Besides the handles at the football stadium, I also want to bring up that the accessible seating at the stadium is not desirable. We do not sit in them because you can't watch the game. Ricky has offered the glass partition in pack to us, but then you're not part of the game. game, and we can't sit with our friends or our family. The auditoriums and all the gyms, there's no accessible seating in that. If you come in a wheelchair, you sit in the aisles. That separates you from the people and the feeling of the group. I went to a soccer game last night for JV, or last week for JV, and there was a guy there from Moundsville. He went up to the bathroom, the door was locked, he couldn't get in. When you work with people with disabilities, you can look at them and you get vibes. I said, "I'll help you, I know that door isn't accessible," and he said, "Yes." So we went around to the front, and we got in. Ten thousand people are turning 65 every day. We all want accessibility, and I'm one of those. I don't know how many wheelchair students we have in this district, but I don't see them at events, I don't see them at athletic events. And there's a reason for that. It isn't them, it's the accessibility of a building. Accessibility to a building is not always ADA standards. You have to be in a wheelchair to know what is truly accessible. So I am looking for immediate action, or I am not looking for immediate action, but I'm looking for evaluation. And the best way that we can have a start at this is to put on automatic doors and automatic door handlers at the football stadium. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Our fourth speaker is Carl Blondin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Unfortunately, the behavior of the political class has again put the public treasury at risk.
Excuse me, Carl, would you mind just stating your full name and your address, please?
Carl Blondin, Sunrise Avenue, Stillwater, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, a complaint was lodged against board members Stivland and Patachik. I'm afraid this is going to cost the district money, and it will cost the district money because of the behavior of those board members. I haven't seen the complaint. Ms. Stivland, if you recall the August 10th board meeting, I brought up that you affirmed false and defamatory statements about a district employee. In that meeting, you further stated, "The facts you are raising regarding that particular employee are quote 'continuing to be evolved.'" Ma'am, that was a false statement. The facts were known, you knew them. Our employee did not write a check or disburse funds. And what you said was false, it was intentional, it was defamatory. It puts the public treasury at risk.
Excuse me, Mr. Blondin, I'm going to defer actually to Chair Hefner, who just arrived. Given the fact that we are undergoing an active investigation, I'm not sure if we're allowed to hear comments pertaining to the investigation or relative to the people who are named.
I have no idea what the investigation is.
So I just want to make sure that we are holding ourselves to the highest standard in terms of protecting the integrity of the investigation, so... Or maybe Attorney Lehman, you would have any insight?
Well...
Okay. We'll wait.
I'd say we err on the side of being safe, and if... You know, I said to Carl the last time, I think that you were up, or one of the recent times, you know, some of it we've got to put in your court as well, but I agree that, given a pending investigation, if you're going to speak to that pending investigation, I think that is what we would stop at this time.
I have no knowledge of what the investigation is about.
Are you going to speak to the pending investigation?
I'm going to speak about Ms. Stivland's behavior. Whether or not that is the subject of the investigation, I have no idea. I honestly don't. I have not seen the complaint, I don't know what it is. I'm concerned that her behavior is going to cost this district money, a lot of money. She essentially accused one of our employees of felony embezzlement of public property. That is a highly defamatory statement, and since she said it, in her capacity as a board member, she has put the public treasury at risk.
I understand what you're saying. We don't know, and I don't think it should be or is public knowledge, of what any allegations to this point have been made. Go ahead.
This is kind of ridiculous, because everything you're saying is defaming me right now, because none of it is...
None of it is defamatory, ma'am. You made a false statement about a district employee.
Mr. Blondin?
Are you saying that your statement was true? Tell me right now, do you think it's true? No?
We're not, I don't have any intention to get into a back and forth, I just...
And I don't think you should even make a comment at this point.
Am I calling a five-minute recess? All right, our next speaker, Eric Anderson. So, Mr. Blondin, we are going to confer with our attorneys to make sure that... Just to make sure that we are doing our due diligence, to make sure that any comments... I am not personally comfortable, not without knowing the scope of what we can allow relative to the complaint with... When a complaint... Excuse me, when the subject of the complaint is named. So I'm erring on the side of caution. It's not to suppress free speech at all, so I hope you respect that, but I want to make sure that we're not putting our district at any liability or risk, so I ask that you understand my position on that.
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
Ms. Stivland, to quote Daniel Patrick Moynihan, "Everyone's entitled to their own opinion. No one is entitled to their own facts." Please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Eric Anderson.
My name's Eric Anderson, I live at 5511 Oak Green Place in Oak Park Heights. My topic tonight is what do our students have to teach us? I'm the parent of two children at Oakland Middle School, and I'm a district employee. I'm here tonight to share a life lesson that a kindergartner going into first grade taught me this summer. I supervise our Summer Success Program, which is summer school. The goals of the program are to improve student engagement in the areas of math and reading, and to build relationships with students across our elementary buildings. In an attempt to paint a picture, day one is nothing short of controlled chaos. We have parents from across the district putting their students on buses or dropping their students off in an unfamiliar building in an unfamiliar learning environment. Meanwhile, our students are asked to get reused to school after four weeks away. My story is about a kindergartner who was terrified to leave his mother. She walked him hand in hand into the cafeteria for breakfast. His tears and tight grip on his mother's arm called me, as a caring and experienced educator, into action. I brought him his breakfast while he continued to desperately cling to his mother's arm. He was now surrounded by two loving and caring adults who, to be perfectly honest, had absolutely no idea what to do next. Meanwhile, standing in line and getting her breakfast was a kindergarten girl who was watching intensely as this whole thing played out. After getting her food, she sat down next to the boy's mother and stated in a confident voice, "I got this." She proceeded to talk to the boy, and eventually he released his grip from his mother's arm, and when the bell rang signaling the end of breakfast, they walked arm in arm to class together. I share this as a life lesson that I learned from a kindergartner, that despite any fears I may have as a community member, parent, or educator, if I let go of my preconceived notions and allow myself to be open and receptive to change, and sometimes, and this is hard for me, show the wisdom to know when to simply get out of the way, our children will learn and move forward together. Our kids got this. And with permission, I say thank you tomorrow.
And our sixth and our last speaker, Luke Anderson. Sir Luke Anderson? All right, that concludes our inform. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the September 28th, 2017 school board meeting, the minutes of October 10th, 2017 special meeting, the dispersment register spanning from September 21st through October 4th, 2017, the human resources personnel report, field trip for one coach and four students to attend the National FFA Convention and Expo Career Show in Indianapolis, Indiana, October 24th through the 28th, 2017, field trip for one coach, one chaperone, and 12 student athletes to travel to West Yellowstone, Montana for training November 18th through the 24th, 2017, field trip for four coaches, two chaperones, and 37 student athletes to travel to Stewart, Florida to prepare for the season and team building, March 17th through the 24th, 2018. May please have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please show by raising your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is a report, I'll turn this over to Superintendent Pontrelli.
Thank you. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Bob McDowell. He's going to be sharing with you about a new program called Stillwater Innovates Pony Idea Quest, and this is a unique partnership between seven school districts and Optum. And I'll let him tell you about the details. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. School Board Superintendent Pontrelli, I want to take just a few minutes to share with you a new and innovative thing we are going to roll out on Monday of next week, and I think in your board packets, you've got a flyer that looks like this. And it is, as Superintendent Pontrelli noted, it's called Pony Idea Quest, and the idea behind it is just that. It's an opportunity for all of the employees, so anyone who's an employee in the district, to have an opportunity to pose to us via crowdsourcing an idea that they may have to make the district work better. The ideas are categorized into small, medium, and large ideas, and the way the process works is we'll kick this off Monday. As I stated, there'll be a two-week period of time where on Monday, employees will get a link to log in, they create a login and username, and then they will have access to the Stillwater Innovates website, which allows them to simply post their idea, what problem they want to solve, what they think might be the cost, or any other thing that might go into it, and whether they're willing to champion the piloting of that idea, or they need someone else to do that for them. After that two-week period of time, where folks can also comment on those ideas, then there's a week-long process that's called parawise voting. So we enter into the crowdsourcing, where all the employees in the district can log in, and they can see all the ideas that were posted, they can then comment on them, what they like, what they think could be used as an improvement, and then they can vote on those ideas. Then the final week is where we use what we are now calling our IQ team, which is a group of Stillwater teachers, administrators, and parents, and we will go through all of the ideas and try to figure out, based on all that parawise voting, which ideas we think we can pull off between January and May in pilot form, so small scale. That's where Optum comes in. Optum is a company on the west side of the cities that does innovative and solutions for health organizations, and they have a philanthropic and educational outlet, and so what they started about six years ago was trying to figure out how could they use their services and their innovation teams to support schools. Several school districts have used that partnership over the last couple of years, and then through our connections across the district, we were able to get involved with it this year, which will be the seventh year, and there's a total of eight districts, including Stillwater, that are running this program this fall. So we're just excited to share that with you, so that you know what's going on. It's something that I'm hoping that through crowdsourcing and all of our employees, that we'll be able to get some great input, because what we know is that a lot of the great ideas that we have come from the employees that are in all of our buildings, and we don't always have an opportunity, or haven't had an opportunity up to this point, to really harness those ideas without having some type of a formal meeting or something like that. So we're looking forward to it and hoping that it works well. It's been successful in other districts.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Are there any questions for Dr. McDowell?
Back when I was teaching, and you'd go to a conference, almost always, you'd hear an idea or two that other districts were doing. Is this open to, if I know it's being done in our St. Paul, could I bring it to Stillwater and get it funded according to that circle on the bottom that you've got ideas are separated by? If I know it's going to cost $2,500, it's not a new idea, I'm taking it from another district, but that's open to us?
Any idea is open to this. The idea behind that white box where small ideas are, any idea that is no cost to 1,000, and then 1,000 to 5,000, 5,000 to 25,000, that is essentially there to help people kind of frame or put a sandbox around, "I've got this idea, here's kind of the scope of that." But everything's open, George.
Okay, and then my second question is, is there built in, either through Optum or through our professional development, is sustainability built in as part of this, or is this meant to be, "We're going to try it, it flopped," or "We're going to try it, it worked, now we'll continue to fund it"? How are you looking at it?
That's the intent. That's what's happened in other districts, is we will have to decide, once we get to the piloting phase, we will have to decide with the help of Optum, because they'll bring their design teams in to help us support. If I'm a teacher in a classroom, using your example, and I say, "I want to try this," and we say, "Yep, we want to try this as a pilot." If that person wants to champion that idea, we'll take that person under our wing, we'll run them through the design process, we'll make sure that the solution or idea that they want to try is actually solving what they're trying to solve. Optum will help us make sure through their human design folks and their innovation folks that we're actually doing that process correctly. And then the idea would be that we would pilot that, and we will have to navigate our first round through, we'll have to navigate what the totality of our ability at the district in learning and innovation to help support teachers, right? We won't have the person power to support 100 ideas, but we might have the support to be able to do 10 small ideas, or three small ideas, a medium idea, and maybe there will be a great idea, whereas at the director level, we say, "We really want to pilot this and see if it works before we invest a lot of money," or it could be something where we'd bring to you and say, "We piloted this in a building, we think it can go large scale, we're going to make a recommendation to the board that we go large scale with it." So we're opening it up to everything.
Real good idea, I think.
I have a question. Is there a reason that student invoice isn't being taken in this, or is there a way we can encourage students to share input on where they go to school every day?
Yes. So here's what happens with the stu... So let me back up. Based on the experiences of other districts, because that question has come up when I go to these meetings about how to do this, and the way that we are doing it is, part of our communications to teachers and all of our other staff is to use students to solicit those ideas. So every communication that I send out now, after the 16th, the staff will be, "Remember, you have students you work with every day, they may have great ideas." And so at this point, that's how we're going to manage that. So you now know, and you now know that this is coming, and so you should be asking your teachers about it after Monday, because they will have gotten the blast email about it. teachers about it after Monday, because they will have gotten the blast email about it. And that's how we'll get students involved this first round. Who knows what it'll grow into.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that was my exact question.
It's a great question.
Thank you. Dr. Pearson?
I have a couple of questions. First, where is this in the budget? Where does that come out of?
There is no, there's no cost to it at this point, depending upon what we would decide we could manage. Those ideas will come out of the curriculum budget or the general budget on the side of the House that I oversee.
Okay, so we aren't paying Optum at this point?
We are not. It's part, like I said, it's part of their philanthropic arm. That's why there's only eight districts.
Nice.
Because they're willing to partner with us and make this a bigger thing. So it's helped to stay connected with some of the districts. It relates back to our work that Superintendent Pontrelli talked about. This is really stemming out of our work with Minnetoka at Eden Prairie and the development of this conference that we'll be hosting. So things are growing and really taking off, and this is one of those arms of that. So we're excited about it.
Very cool. And then, is it something that you hope to do on a regular basis?
We're hoping that it'll become an annual event.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair Lehman?
Dr. McDowell, is there, can you use this to say, like, we have a current program, but we want to change it or expand it, or is it just all new ideas?
Nope, it could be anything. And that's explained in the communications that go out to staff, if I remember off the top of my head, it is worded as such. There's no idea that's too small, no innovation that's too big. We want to hear all of it, because one person may have an idea that might kind of fit, and another person might have another idea, and we might be able to blend the two, and it could be something that you're speaking to. It could be something that's already in existence in one building, not in another, and so we need to just figure out how we ramp that up or build upon it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. McDowell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next agenda item is an action item. The district was recently informed by the Elections Office at Washington County that the city of Stillwater has changed the polling location of Ward 3, Precinct 5. What this essentially means is that Stonebridge Elementary is no longer a polling location, and the voters will now vote at the Stillwater Readiness Center, or the Armory. So we have an action item to make this resolution. I will read this, and this essentially then will officially change that polling location. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 834, State of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Sections 205A.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The Board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Sections 205A.11, the Board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections, not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school districts' special and general elections, not held on the same day as a statewide election. Board members, I'll draw your attention to the resolution in your board packet that identifies the municipal precincts, those locations and the street edges.
It's an updated one.
A new one.
Yes, this one has.
Okay, thank you. Updated one. Dated at the top, October, thank you, October 12, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the polling locations.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, question?
Director Patachuk?
Yes. Is there any way that we can project this so that the audience, which is rather extensive tonight, can see the same information that we're looking at?
Captain?
Yep.
Can I ask a question while?
Yes, Director Pearson?
So I apologize for my confusion. So are we just voting for the change in location, or are we also voting for the combining? So we're going from 30 to 22 polling places?
Right.
You know that requires all school districts? Okay. So in number two, it says the Board may establish, but here, you're saying it says it requires it?
New election law from the 2017 legislative session will require school districts to approve a resolution to combine polling places. That resolution must be approved by December 31 of each year.
Okay. And do you know how we, or who chooses?
I can answer that. The combined, first of all, the combined polling locations are used in the event of a special election, or an election that we would have held outside of a statewide election. Typically, we have, off the top of my head, I think, 30 polling locations. In a special election, the voter turnout is not as great. So the cities and townships, instead of running two polling locations, or three, will combine them into one. That said, we do work with the County Elections Office, and each city and town in the district has determined the polling locations. And we use, part of the legislation is, we use a designated location that has been determined by the city or towns within the district.
Okay.
I know.
Well, no, it does make sense. But do you know how residents are notified that they're, would that come out in information from us when we are sending information out?
For a change in location, with the instance of Stonebridge Elementary now not being a polling location, and that moving to the Stillwater Armory, or they call it the Readiness Center, before we would hold an election, there is an election law, I believe it's 60-day notice. I would have to check the election law specifically, but we would mail them a postcard, letting them know there was a change in their polling location. And that has been determined by the city of Stillwater, that they moved their precinct out of Stonebridge and over to the Armory.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Prue. Yes, Director Patachuk?
A couple of questions, because I'm a little bit confused, but at the same time, I'm very concerned. Number one, is this something that we, as a board, have a choice to do, or is this something that we have to do?
I'll just answer the note that Barb sent to everybody. A new election law from the 2017 legislative session will require school districts to approve a resolution to combine polling places. That resolution must be approved by December 31 of each year. The Board must designate the combined polling place or places they would use in the future calendar year, and notify county auditors by sending them a copy of the resolution. Those are the first two paragraphs in the article.
And Mr. Patachuk, just to add to that, we have used the combined polling locations in the past, but we've never been required to pass the resolution prior to calling the election. So this actually will give the voters more notification than it would in other years past.
Here's my concern. The way I understand it, and what's just been said, is that if there were a special election, because there's not a statewide office in contention, okay, what might that be? Would that be a renewal of a levy? Would that be a facilities issue? Would that be a special election to fill a school board seat?
Yes, yes, and yes. It would be.
And see, my problem with that is that I don't want us using a form of what sounds to me very much like gerrymandering. And what I mean by that is, I don't think a lot of voters will understand the differences between these two. I think the knee-jerk reaction is, where did I vote last time? Where did I vote for president? Where did I vote for governor? A special election comes along, and there's less places, I go to the wrong place to vote, and it's very confusing. And so I'm saying, as a practical matter, I have a lot of trouble with this.
Director Lehman?
I guess the concern then should be directed to our local legislators, because this is a statute. I pulled it up right now, and it's pretty clear to me by reading it. It says the school board must designate. So we have no discretion in adopting this. And I share your concern, however, it's a concern that's probably more appropriately directed at the legislature than the school board. And I know you're not directing it at the school board, but, you know, if this is of importance, it's probably something that we could add to our legislative agenda. But the language in the statute is pretty clear to me, so.
Tom, can you tell me what? I'm looking at one, too, that says May, so I'm confused. I just want to make sure that we're, and it's one word, but I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So I'm looking at 205A.11.
Yep, I'm looking at subdivision 2, paren B, where it says, by December 31 of each year, the school board must designate by resolution combined polling places. The combined polling places designated in the resolution are the polling places for the following calendar year, unless a change is made. And then it sets out the statute.
So how I read that, because if you look at A, it says the school board may designate combined polling places. So I think it's saying, we can designate them. If we do, we must then do it by December 31, is what it's saying.
Yeah, it's not the most artfully drafted legislation, but again, I go to B, where it's pretty clear that we have to designate by resolution combined polling places.
And I think for me, I just want to know that residents are going to be notified clearly of their polling place. I think that's the biggest thing.
Jennifer?
Yes, Director Palatik.
My question was kind of along both Director Pearson and Patachuk's lines, where are we, how do we provide this information to residents? Are, you know, that, do we have an easy access for people to look at where they need to go in enough time? Because I agree, if it's last minute, that's a problem for me, so.
We do. There's two things. The change in polling location, we would have to, we are required in election law to send notification via postcard to the voters whose location has changed. Typically, when the district does run special elections for levy referendum, bond referendum, or a school board vacancy, whatever may come up, would, we do send that information out. We post it on our website. We post the link to where you plug in your address, it tells you what your location is. We do post all of that information and do mail it out in our literature.
Okay, thank you. Director Patachuk?
See, again, Tom, thanks for your explanation. And again, I'm not saying I completely agree, but thank you for the attempt. What bothers me is this, where we do have a choice, and this will face future Board, and that is when you hold a renewal levy election is up to us. When you hold a facilities election is up to us. And my point is that if you go to do that in a special election, as it's described with these different polling places, to me, unfortunately, that reeks of manipulation. And I don't like that. That's why, and it comes up in the legislature, it will come up again, and I have no problem with talking to legislators and saying, do you realize what you're doing here? But I do believe that between elections, there is confusion. You can send a postcard, you can make a phone call, but lots of people won't get it. It'll be habit forming. I think it's going to be very difficult, even for a lot of people, when you switch from Stonebridge to the firehouse. They wait till the last minute, not all, but some. I want to make it easier so more people vote rather than fewer.
Well, and I think they are, because I think what you're going to see is a trend in, and it's already started, is more absentee ballots. And also now, the voting can occur really whenever you want. You don't even have to, you can go right to the county seat and vote in your election without even having to wait till early voting. And also, I was just going to say, the statute does say that the school district clerk shall prepare a notice to the voters who will be voting in a combined polling place for a school district special election. The notice must include following information, the date of the election, the hours of voting, and the location of the voter's polling place. The notice must be sent by non-forwardable mail to every affected household in the school district with at least one registered voter. The notice must be mailed no later than 14 days before the election. The mailed notice is not required for a school district special election that is held on the second Tuesday in August, the Tuesday following the first Monday in November, for a special election conducted entirely by mail. A notice that is returned as undeliverable must be forwarded immediately to the county auditor. So they put in there as many requirements for notice as possible.
But I think, Tom.
Director Patachuk?
And what you're going to see, and it was up in the last session, is where you're only allowed to have financial issues by the Board come up during regular state elections or national elections. So my point is, inadvertently, I think you're driving in that direction, or that direction. Now, that came up at the last session, it was unsuccessful, but I'm saying, stay tuned. I think it's going to be on the docket.
Director Pearson?
Thank you. Do we have any idea how much this will save the district by combining? Because isn't that the point, that it's going to save somebody money?
Does it save the district money?
Otherwise, why?
Well, can I read the second last paragraph? Elections are costly. Without passing the resolution, districts may end up having to pay tens of thousands of dollars for election equipment, and election judges for dozens of polling places instead of just one or two combined polling places. We'd be going actually from 29 to 22 polling places. So it'd be the equipment and the election judges for seven, whatever that amounts to.
Democracy is not cheap.
You got that right. But I--
Yes.
I go back to the thing we got from MSBA. Headline is, new law requires all school districts to approve a resolution. Do we have any choice?
So to me, that means--
I'm sorry. Director Stivlin?
I'm looking at what Shelley was saying, too, and it's, it sounds like what, the way I understand this is, we must have a resolution, but we may choose not to have combined polling. We may choose, in the circumstance of special election, we can use the regular polling stations, and of course, it would incur the extra cost. The chances of, you know, it's a really rare occurrence, you know? But it sounds to me, and looking at this again, it's, the answer is that we may choose to combine polling places. We are not required to. But if we do decide we want to combine the polling places, we are required to have a resolution and report that, and also inform the public. Is that how you understand it? That's how I'm reading this.
Chair Huthner?
A new election law from the 2017 legislative session will require school districts to approve a resolution to combine polling places. That's the first sentence, MSBA's--
If we want--
Require school districts to approve a resolution to combine polling places. We must approve a resolution to combine polling places.
Well, there's two different ways to interpret that. If we want to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Shelley, you had your hand up.
Well, I was just, and it is confusing, I think, but if I could just read the state statute in subdivision 2, it says combined polling place. It says, A, when no other election is being held in a school district, the school board may designate combined polling places at which the voters in those precincts may vote in the school district election. B, by December 31 of each year, the school board must designate by resolution combined polling places. So in the first part, it says, the school board may designate combined polling places. I think what B is saying is, if we do, we must have a resolution.
I have a suggestion, since MSBA is urging everybody to pass a resolution during August, September, October, or November, and we've got another meeting in October and two in November, how about we table this? How about we table this, and we get more information from MSBA as to how this is meant to work?
Excuse me one second. So I hear you making an amendment to the current motion on the table.
Or are we tabling it?
I would move to table it, because we need more information before we act.
Right. But through an amendment, you're offering that? Okay. Director Stivlin?
Sorry. Before we move to that, can I ask one more question regarding this? I had a question earlier about the change of the Stillwater, the Stonebridge location being changed to the Armory. Is that going to be a change that would happen no matter what? Or is that only--
Yes. It's already actually taken place by the city of Stillwater.
Okay. Which I would like to say is wonderful. It'll be really nice to move that.
Yeah. That seems like it could change. Okay.
Well, I'll second George's motion to table it for now.
Okay. So all those in favor to table this motion to combine polling locations and revisit this at a future meeting, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. All right, our board member reports. Board Chair Hettner?
I have nothing.
All right. Moving on to our board member reports. You can start at this end. Director Stivlin, would you like to go first?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Nothing. Thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing?
I have something. The, and I speak as the Chair of the Legislative Committee tomorrow at Hopkins--
Under working groups, or?
Yeah, working group.
Oh, we're under board member reports.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Because I got a working group.
Good. I'll defer then.
No, I'm, are there any other board member?
Any other board member? Director Pearson? No, I have nothing, Pearson, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So if I can--
So now our working group reports.
The Minnesota School Boards Association is sponsoring tomorrow at Hopkins, and Hopkins was one of four districts that I've been told have very, very active and exemplary procedures and performance in terms of their legislative committee. And what they're trying to do is to reach out, inform relationships with a wider group than just Hopkins, Wayzetta, Robbinsdale, and Orno, and so what they have sponsored is a get-together tomorrow at about 9 o'clock, and they've invited school board members to come and talk about common issues with the legislative action in view. So I just wanted to reiterate that's happening. I've already shared this with both Paula and with Sarah. Any other board members? I think we've talked about this as well, but if you have any last-minute ideas that you would like championed, I would be more than happy to do that, so let me know.
Yes, Chair Hettner?
I think you should champion the resolution one that you just talked about.
Good.
You know, and say something to, especially if MSBA is there, say, "Do we have to do this? What brought it about?"
I will definitely raise it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the suggestion.
All right, Director Lehman, you have a working group report?
Yes, the Board Finance Working Group, Matt, and I want to thank Kristin Holheisel and Denise for really bringing it to the attention to kind of open that meeting up specifically, and maybe other working groups in the future. But the sense, I think, from all of us is, we want to have a better understanding of how board finance works, how our audit works, and how school finance works. And so we had a number of board members there to hear from Erin Nielsen, who is the auditor for the district. He's going to be coming to a board meeting, sharing basically what we discussed, but it gave everyone on the board who was there an opportunity to delve into the audit books, the annual financial report, as well as the Student Activity Audit Report, and the Special Purpose Audit Report. And so we discussed that. Basically, everything is fine. We are doing well, and I'm assuming, I'm assured that we'll have another award for having financial records that are in compliance with all state guidelines, so.
Thank you. Director Palatier? Policy working group?
Policy. First of all, I, we had a meeting this afternoon, and I, as much as I would love to give all the credit to our dream team, Barb Prue is to take the credit. She has really spearheaded this effort to organize our policies in such a way that they help the user, they are user-friendly. So if you're a parent, you can know exactly where to look. If you're a teacher, you can know where to look. Administrator, student, so on and so forth. I'm very proud of this work that she has done for us, and I am quite impatient. So we are, today, we kicked out, we started in the 100s, and we are going by MSBA guidelines. And we kicked out the, like I said, the 100s, and then for the first reading for the next meeting. And we are also going to be taking on some of these noncompliant, or some of these policies that we really need to hit. We're kind of working on some organizational structure with that, in addition to our organizational main structure, which is the 100s, the 200s, the 300s, the 400s. It's a complicated process. I'm mildly frustrated that it hasn't happened sooner than this, but I'm excited that, I'm proud of the group, I'm proud of the effort and their dedication to this. So more to come. It's, we're going to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So, your second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.